All right, good evening, everyone. All the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. And tonight, our guest is Stuart Larson from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day and for many blessings. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to be gathered this evening. We're thankful for the freedoms that we enjoy and for the opportunity it gives us to have laws and those that help to govern us throughout our cities and towns in this great country. We're grateful for those freedoms. We're grateful for these people here who are willing to serve. And we ask thy blessings to be poured out upon them individually and as a body, that as they come together, they might be able to be successful in those things that they undertake that as they hear those things this evening, they might have discernment and opportunities to discuss openly those things which are set before them. We are grateful for those youths that are here this day and for the opportunities they have to grow and learn and participate and see our government in action. We're grateful for those who serve our great country, especially grateful for the many who serve from our town. We ask thy blessings upon them wherever they might be. Please watch over and protect them and keep them from harm's way. Father, again, we acknowledge thy hand in all the blessings that we're given each and every day. Please help us to be worthy of those blessings and to do our best in a community to come together. We're grateful for all that we have. Happy to be with us this night and through this week and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. And welcome the students from Notre Dame Prep. Thank you for joining us today. Roll call please, sir.
May I have it all?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Present.
Vice Mayor Elke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Liddell?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
For my report today, I thought I would take a moment to tell you about a trade organization that I'm part of that's based out of our school. This organization is really making a difference to keep our kids safe. The Fountain Hills Coalition is an organization dedicated to keeping kids off drugs and alcohol. Who makes up this group? NCSO, school officials, lots of volunteers from all walks of life. We've got a DEA agent. We've got representatives from addiction treatment programs, from drugfreeworld.org. We've got parents, just residents in the town who want to help out, there's school officials, town staff, and myself. This group started a test to tip program that's become a valuable tool for the police department in dealing with teenage drinking and drug issues. They initiated the Safe Home Network where each home is pledged to guarantee a safe environment in their homes for our kids. They supply an early action tip that is a parent resource for drug screening and early intervention information when possible teen drug use is suspected. And they are the founders and sponsors of the Above That Club in the schools designed to build refusal skills of students and minimize risky behavior and choices. I wanted to draw attention to this group that's doing amazing work in our schools through our court system and on the streets of our town to keep our kids safe. They are truly a part of making Fountain Hills a great place to live. And now I will read Proclamation for National Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve League. Whereas National Guard and Reserve Forces comprise nearly half of our nation's military strength and are essential to America's national security, and Reserve Component Forces stand ready to answer the calls to serve, whether serving alongside active duty counterparts all across the globe or responding to humanitarian crises at home and abroad. And whereas employers provide critical support to members of the National Guard and Reserve, allowing citizen warriors to serve whenever the nation calls, often foregoing financial gain and making sacrifices in the process. And whereas employer support is stronger than ever, more than 41 years after President Richard Nixon authorized the Secretary of Defense to establish the National Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, and whereas our nation is in debt to the citizen warriors departing the compass of home to ensure our freedoms remain intact. And likewise, America pays special tribute to the commitment of dedicated and supportive employers who continue to make service in the Reserve Components possible. Now therefore, I, Linda M. Pavanor, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby declare September 22nd to the 28th as National Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve League in Fountain Hills. We have two public appearance presentations. Our first is Transit Planning Study Update. And that's Darren Lozano and Janet Strauss from Valley Metro Regional Public Transportation Authority. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
No problem. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here today. I'm Janet Strauss. Unfortunately, Darren and I are unable to attend, but... Can you hear me? Yeah. That's okay, I was mumbled. As I was saying, my name is Janet Strauss. I am with Valley Metro. I'm the project manager for the town of Fountain Hills Transit Deportability Study. And I'm here to give you an update on this project. So some background information, we were tasked with identifying transit system connection opportunities, determining the transit ridership market, as well as examining different transit mode alternatives. This is where we are currently. We've done a lot of public agency involvement and we've reviewed previous studies. We've analyzed existing and future conditions. And we've developed some preliminary service options. Today, we are presented some preliminary transit recommendations and performance criteria as well as actually going over the preliminary service options. So this is from the American Community Survey. This shows current commuting patterns in the town of Fountain Hills. The vast majority of Fountain Hills residents drive to work alone. That's greater than the county average of 76 percent, whereas less than 1 percent actually takes public transportation to work, according to the American Community Survey. We conducted our own travel transit needs survey back in the spring. So we received a total of 469 responses. We did extensive outreach. We had information tables, news articles, as well as reached out to our trip production program participant, and that's employers with employees over 50. One of the questions that we asked was why individuals hadn't used transit service. The overwhelming response was that people preferred to drive, but the next one was that they had no bus service in that area, as well as the other answers were fairly evenly dispersed. We also asked participants what the most important transit needs for Fountain Hills in the Northeast Valley were. The largest one was, the largest response was actually to serve destinations around the valley, as well as to assist residents who have no other way to get around. Now, I note about this, you could have actually checked more than one of these options as well throughout the whole survey. So that's one of the reasons that the percentages don't add up to 100. If using transit was more convenient, would you consider using it, was another question that we asked, and 50 percent of respondents said yes, they would. Further, garner more information to find out where folks would like to go, we asked where they would go using transit. And that again was spread clearly widely across the board, including other destinations around the valley, downtown Fountain Hills, medical appointments outside of Fountain Hills, et cetera. Another question that we asked, would you use any of the following services if they were available? A lot of folks said that they would really like to see light rail and commuter rail service in Fountain Hills. The next highest preference was express bus or downtown service, as well as local bus and neighborhood circulators. So to sum up the survey, 50 percent would consider using transit if it were more convenient. With the increasing age of the town's population, it is possible as well that a dioride or a tax deduction program could be looked at in further detail. In addition, 83 percent of respondents to this survey are residents of Fountain Hills. Now, that was not discerned whether or not it was either part-time or full-time resident. There was not a specific question. 81 percent of respondents are 41 or older. So now I'd like to talk about some of the preliminary service concepts that we've developed. So we listed several variables, including connecting to the regional transit network, the types of facilities that you would need, the cost of service and the frequency, as well as connections to regional activity centers. We would also like to maintain consistency with regional plans and policies, as well as examining your population characteristics. So the service concepts I'm about to go over include doubling the Route 514 trip. The Route 514 is express bus service to travel from downtown Fountain Hills twice in the morning and twice in the evening to downtown Phoenix. We've also are recommending a community connector service, which is like a local circular bus service. We've got three options. We're also discussing a coupon for cab program as well, as well as just a van purchase for the community center. So as I was just saying, the Route 514 doubling the trip, this would provide additional opportunities for users to take transit. It would also satisfy our proposed service standards. All service eventually, we're proposing standards, all express bus service should have four trips in the morning and four trips in the evening. Now, there's a wide disparity across express bus service in the valley, so we're in the preliminary stages of that effort, trying to figure out how to achieve that. But that means that this would meet that standard. It does have a substantial additional cost, and Scottsdale and Phoenix may be unwilling as well to actually contribute funds to cover the extra cost of traveling through those Now, the estimated cost for the doubling of the Route 514 trip is around $210,000. The estimated cost by jurisdiction, this is the way that it is currently funded, $26,000 from Fountain Hills. Scottsdale contributes $124,000, Phoenix contributes $60,000. The estimated annual cost, well, the total cost for all of those trips would be about Next concept that I'll be discussing includes the community connectors. Downtown Fountain Hills to the Mayo Clinic is the first one. The second one is the Target Plaza to the Mayo Clinic. And the third one is the connection to the Light Rail at Sycamore Station. This is in response to the survey of what we heard from Fountain Hills residents that they would really like to see light rail. So as part of this, we are connecting to it. So the vehicle types as well would be short, small vehicles, community circulators, or 15-hanter van, but smaller buses. So this is the first alternative. It does actually go from downtown Fountain Hills to the Mayo Clinic. There would be four trips per day, round trips, so four in the morning and four in the evening. So, and then the estimated annual cost would be about $130,000 to $140,000. Some of the variables include labor and separate miles that's included every year. So that's one of the reasons that the cost estimates for the most part are in range. So this is the second alternative as well. This is actually just from the Target Plaza connecting to the Mayo Clinic. This is probably, if you were going to implement some sort of circulator, this is probably the minimum that you would want to do, just to connect to the regional service. That being said, the Mayo Clinic doesn't have service on the weekends, just on Monday through Friday. The estimated annual cost for that would be around $80,000 to $90,000, and then four round trips daily as well. The third, local community circulator alternative that we examined was the connection to light rail that would travel from downtown Fountain Hills along from Aurora Boulevard to Highway 87, and then at the Sycamore Main Street Station. The stop spacing, there would be pickup points in Fountain Hills, and then obviously not along the Beeline Highway. There would be four inbound and four outbound one-way trips daily as well. The estimated annual cost is between $220,000 and $235,000 a year, because our just operating cost is not an increased capital cost per vehicle. So this is a summation of the last couple of slides that I've just gone over. So the alternative one, which is downtown Fountain Hills to Mayo, alternative two, which is Target to Mayo, and three, which is Fountain Hills to the Light Rail Station. Now, there are some variable costs as well, because once the new light rail extension opens to make the drive, it will actually be a little bit less because it's closer to Fountain Hills. But right now, it would have to travel to Sycamore Station. All of these costs also assume a 5 percent fare box recovery ratio, and that is the amount of money that you get back from what people pay to ride. So some additional costs to consider as well, added express cuts may, will require additional buses as well, labor hours, operating maintenance costs that neighboring communities may not wish to pay for. So these are just some general costs for fleet. The connector shuttle bus is around $100,000. Standard city bus is $500,000. Bus stops anywhere from $1,000 to $10,000, and that usually just depends on the infrastructure that you put down and the type of amenities that you would actually have at that stop, whether it's just a concrete ADA accessible slab, or whether there's a shelter, et cetera. The variable cost over time includes label, labor, fuel, vehicle, internet as well. Another service concept that I'll be talking about today includes a coupon for cab program with ride choice, basically. So it is a program that is administered by Valley Metro. Under our current administration of this program, it's fairly specific on who qualifies for it. It includes 65 and older and persons with disabilities. Participants can purchase up to $100 worth of coupons per month used to pay for cab fares and tips authorized with authorized cab companies. So there's no subsidy rate for cities. So several cities have flexibility of how much they can subsidize. For instance, Mesa subsidizes 70 percent, and San Luis Gilbert and Tempe subsidize 75 percent. So there is, again, flexibility on what the subsidy would be. However, the downfall of this potential service option is that it does leave potential transit users who aren't qualified without transit options. So the estimated annual cost is to assume the entire LTAS funding allocation. So coupons for cabs versus dioride. Dioride is ADA, paraterrantive service that is required to be within three quarters of a mile or fixed without service. So generally, that type of demand service is way more expensive to implement. The dioride subsidy per boarding is around $36.25 versus the average cost per trip for a coupon for cab type program, which is $10.20 as well, and then the cost of the city would be $7.65. So another service concept that we'd like to bring up includes just a van purchase for the community center. And this would utilize volunteer drivers as well. So the senior center would be responsible for operating and maintenance costs, administration, recruitment and retention, and then this would offer additional transit service alternatives with no specific operating cost to this town. There is also flexibility in scheduling and providing service. So this also would assume total LTAS, that you would just use that money to purchase the van. Now that I've talked about the concepts a little bit, I'd like to talk about the funding. Currently, there is Proposition 400, the Public Transportation Fund, that's from 2004 when Maricopa County passed the half-cent sales tax that is split between transit and regional streets, as well as highways, and a portion of that goes to transit. So all of Fountain Hills Public Transportation Funds are used currently to pay for Route 514 and their portion of it. So the other existing transit fund is the Local Transportation Assistance Fund, too. This is currently being used to fund a study and why I'm here with you today. There's some additional potential funding sources as well, some restrictions on Pop 400, can only be used for regional transit services, not community circulators, so it would have to be a regional route. Paraterrantive funding is actually only available for ADA complimentary service on fixed routes. This pass will also expire in 2026. It is assumed that before then, we will be going back to the voters with another set of plans and trying to get funding again. The other funding source is LTAS 2, and this may be used for any transit project. Now, a couple of years ago, it was actually swept by the state legislature, experiencing economic downturns. However, through a court case, it was actually reinstated. Because it's only been reinstated for a year or two, that's probably why we don't think of it as permanent at the moment. I mean, I believe that it is, and obviously court action would be required to take it away, but it's just one of those things that you just don't necessarily want to completely count on, even though it probably will be there. So in addition, you can also look into public-private partnerships, such as the coupon for cabs, you would work with a local cab company, as well as advertising shelters and places. There's also the possibility of local funding to be used to pursue that. So travel demand, basically, how many people would ride these proposed services? Well, we've done some research, and plus or minus 10 percent of the base ridership for Route 514, is possible. It could really increase ridership. It's also possible that it could just spread existing ridership along the times, unfortunately, until you actually implement those trips, you sort of know, but not completely. So the community connectors, those are subject to operating characteristics, where they stop, how frequent they are, those types of things. The coupons for cabs, this estimates approximately five to 5,500 trips annually, and assumes about 45 to 50 participants per month. Now, with this program, that doesn't mean that it's the same 45 to 50 people per month. It just means that that's about how many people can actually purchase the coupon of cab book, the coupon book, for a month. So, and a van purchase as well, that would be subject to how frequently you run it, how easy it was to keep and maintain volunteers, et cetera. So we've got some preliminary service recommendations. Basically, as a community, it has to be asked, who really needs to be served? Do you consider the future transit needs of the community, as well as the community characteristics, which may suggest options tailored towards a population that is perhaps getting older? Another recommendation as well would be the coupons for cabs program. The service is relatively low cost, and it will provide service to residents 65 and older, as well as folks with disabilities. There's flexibility in the sense that the town could actually set the subsidy rate, as well as users contribute a much greater cost than normal transit alternatives. For instance, we assumed with our community circulators, there would be a 5 percent fare box recovery versus this where it's 25 percent. So there's also minimal administration requirements. Another option that we are recommending includes localized van and connector service. There's flexibility in the application. It can be tailored to meet the community's needs, as well as, however, volunteer programs are said to be consistent. But there is, and there will be a high degree of local administrative oversight as well. So the next steps include finalizing transit service recommendations, which is why we're here tonight, as well as developing some short and long-range transit investment strategies October through December. And we will be coming back to you in December for a final acceptance of the study as well, after we get your feedback.
Good, thank you. Why is the service that you have to connect Fountain Hills to either Country Club or to Sycamore, why is that only Monday to Friday? Isn't the light rail run weekends, too?
It does, yes. And it was just on Monday through Friday to limit the cost. However, we can very easily, if you'd like to see, as well add some weekend trips in there.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming. I drew up quite a few. I'll try to do it in the order that you were doing it. First, I just wanted to confirm with you that the LTAS money is about $60,000 to $65,000. The PTF Pop 400 money is the $26,000 that we give, that we contribute for the bus, for the 514. So if we want to maintain a 514, which, you know, I don't want to speak for anybody, but if we do, then that's occupied, we're really talking about the 62 or 65. So is that what you think?
Thank you. Yes, it is.
Okay. What, a couple of questions I had about the Pop 400. Originally, there was going to be an extension of the 106 bus that's in Scottsdale that would go, that would come to Saguaro. And I believe when things started turning down, that may have postponed that. Do you have any idea if that's even on the table anymore?
No, I don't believe that it is. The puria say for the Pop 400, the 106, which took the place, the 80 just took the place of the 106 this past July. It was slated to be extended, but unfortunately, that was cut along with other projects as well from the economic downturn.
Okay, Mayor. Thank you. The, so, and then kind of the opposite of what the mayor asked you, with your alternative one and two, you have Saturdays and Sundays, so that's an, that would be an alternative if we went there, which it seems pretty cost prohibitive, but that could be part of that, especially since Mayo is closed on the weekends. About the cab program, I had a couple of questions about that. Now, we talked briefly, and it's the program itself that makes it limited to seniors and those that may have special needs. Will those cabs handle wheelchairs?
Yes, they are wheelchair accessible.
Yes, for wheelchairs, thank you. And Mayor, the, it would be a private cab company. Would there be any cost to us that Valley Metro was administering it, or is this, or is that something that you do the program and we just have to pay for the subsidy?
Let me... Um, let me refer to the woman who runs the program, so, um, Ms. Irene Fink will answer that question, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
There is a small administrative fee, but it is not cost prohibitive, it's less than five percent for this program, and I want to make a little change to the program and let you know that we no longer sell coupons for tabs, we migrated on July first of this year to an electronic fare payment card. So now it's called a Ride Choice Fare Card, so it, um, eliminates the need for people to have to rip out coupons and then it just gets loaded with a value every month based on the, what they submit, okay?
Thank you. Um, Mayor, this probably would be for you then, do it, will there, would there be, would there be tabs that would be in the area, that would stay in the area, like one or two?
There's actually about ten different tab companies that are contracted with, with us for that service.
And Mayor, and would they, um, would the ca- would the person that leased the cab be legally bound to always be the driver of the cab?
If they leased the cab, yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. And then last thing about tabs, would it be first come, first served, or how do you run your, um, subsidy program?
Well, the sub- the individual, um, has independence to call and schedule a trip whenever they want, they don't call anybody other than a taxi provider itself. The rates have been negotiated with these providers in order to, um, minimize costs to the customer, um, so...
So, Mayor, so the amount of money that we have, say it's the sixty-five minus the five percent, we would decide what our subsidy would be, if it's seventy percent or whatever, then how would, you know, so a, a senior or somebody wants to buy or get into the fare card, where, where would they go in the, in the order to be able to, to be eligible?
Okay, to be eligible, they would need to call us, and we can send them the application, and someone in my office reviews the application, authorizes it, and then we subcontract with another company to maintain it, and she sends those applications to them. They immediately send a welcome packet with the card right away to the customer, um, if it, if you choose to go fifty, go fifty percent, the customer would pay fifty dollars a month, and a hundred dollars would be loaded on their card.
Okay.
For them to use.
One more, Mayor, the van, the vans, the, um, you have it set up that we would actually buy the van with vans with, with our money, what if the, um, vans could be purchased with, um, fed, I think it's federal money of fifty-three-ten?
Fifty-three-ten.
And then the sixty-five thousand would be used maybe for the operation, because it looks like this is saying that the senior services would be doing the operation, which means that would be an expense to them. Is there a way to get help with the purchase of those vehicles, and then we could help with the operation of the, of the program?
Yeah, yes, um, there is federal money available, but, um, it does come with, uh, all of the requirements of, uh, federal, um, grants and requirements, including administrative costs as well as, um, now, so that there, there's things that have to be, basically.
The vehicles have to be made, ninety percent of the vehicle has to be made in the US, so someone has to go and, and physically be there when they're putting the vehicle together to make sure that the nuts and bolts screws and everything, um, came from the US, part of the FPA requirement.
Well, Mayor, the, um, the fact that they would be granting money to buy vans with qualifications required, I don't think is that, uh, unusual, but, um, don't, quite a few, uh, other communities take advantage of these, uh, pristine, these vans with fifty-three-ten funds, and is there a way to make it a little bit easier to do?
Yeah, yeah, other communities do, uh, take advantage of that. Um, the Maricopa Association of Government has a coupon thing as well that, um, deals with van sharing as well, so there, there are resources out there, um, looking at federal purchase as well. Um, and if you would like, um, in addition to adding the costs for weekend trips to rail, we can also examine some, uh, federal opportunities, federal funding opportunities for purchasing the vans in the report.
Thank you very much. Sure, I'm sure you asked a lot of questions that everybody else had on their mind, so that's good. Um, I, I just wanted to ask you about connectivity, I mean, obviously, uh, our senior population is, uh, a group that we're very concerned with, getting them to the Mayo, getting them to doctor's appointments, and our volunteer program is not adequate to cover that. Um, if, if you're connecting to the Mayo, um, obviously it's not on weekends, but what kind of connectivity that is there from the Mayo into the rest of the valley from there?
So that, um, actually, it does include, uh, connecting to, to Mayo, but if you were to connect to the regional system on the weekends, it would actually have to be extended to Ninetieth Street and South, because there are only eight trips per day that actually go to the Mayo along, um, the eighty, so you could ma- potentially mask those trips as well, but, um, to service on weekends, to actually connect to the regional system, it would have to be extended to Ninetieth Street and South.
Okay, but you're just talking about, um, the, the weekdays, okay, what kind of connectivity is there from the Mayo to the valley from there?
Um, that it connects into the entire regional transit system, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, does anyone else have questions? Uh, Councilwoman Alki?
Thank you for coming out this evening. Um, let's just assume for the sake of argument that the town of Fountain Hills only has the LTAS Two monies to spend on transportation, and as you pointed out, sometimes it's there, sometimes not, we're, we're assuming it's going to be there. What would be, if that was exclusively the only monies that the town were to spend based on this study thus far, what would be the, I guess, the biggest bang for the buck, sort of speaks, that the town, uh, could get in, in the form of transportation based on the needs that you've seen so far?
Probably the preliminary recommendation would be to join the, um, coupon for tabs or Ride Choice Program, but that's preliminary, so it would be that one, because again, there's flexibility and the, the, um, subsidy rate.
One additional question, if, if those were the only funds that the, that the town had, how would, how would we gauge, because year to year it may be various, work with the cost of, how would we be able to gauge just to, so the town didn't go over that much, and so we were only using the LTAS Two funds? Are there measures in place where we could say, okay, if October of this year, we've used all the sixty-five thousand, so we're not using an additional fund, how would that work?
Um, yes, you, you can set a cap, so you only have, uh, so much money to spend, which is how we figured out that it would be, uh, forty-five to fifty people per month. Um, we basically just worked backwards, et cetera, if you had sixty thousand dollars, um, divided by twelve, et cetera, so yes, you can set that cap, and that can be worked. Mm-hmm, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, I really appreciate it, Mayor Tavano, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you to your staff for all the work you've done so far, we look forward to you coming back with the next phase. All right, we are up to our next presentation, which is My Republic Rewards Community Grant Committee, and Representative Chris Coyle is here from Republic Services. Um, before he gets started, I want to say thank you for your generous donation to the press box at the Fountain...
You're welcome, thank you.
Football stadium.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we've made that commitment for this season and for next season, so very happy about that. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, staff. My name's Chris Coyle, I'm from Republic Services. Um, let me make sure, there you go, have that right. I'm here to give you an update on the community grants program, um, for the town of Fountain Hills. First, before I get started, I want to introduce the committee members that have been working hard on this. Um, myself is on the committee, we have a cell, Matthew here, um, we also have Robin Store here, um, Dory, Dory Whitrigg is not here, she's our secretary, and Bo James is our chairman, and I also like to thank Raymond Reese, who's our, uh, town liaison, and has been helping and, and guiding us through this process. So My Republic Rewards is all about giving back. Um, when the recycling program came in, um, there was, the community wanted a way to, um, be able to somehow contribute to recycling in a manner towards nonprofits in the town of Fountain Hills. So that's why we developed this committee, to figure out how we can give that money back. So this is taking, this is a philanthropic, philanthropic armor that My Republic Rewards curbside recycling program that will go to benefit those nonprofits. So what kind of projects are we looking for? First, obviously, environmental projects, projects that enhance the beauty of the community, um, promote sustainability, um, and then water conversation, conservation projects also. Uh, we're also looking for public enjoyment, projects that offer a benefit to the community or an aesthetic benefit to the community that everybody can enjoy. Um, educational projects, projects that will help reduce litter or waste, or help advance the awareness of reduce, reuse, recycle within the community. And then finally, healthy and active lifestyles, something about being outside, being outdoors, physical activity, or nutritional, educational programs. So the requ- there's, um, here are the highlights, the requirement highlights for the program. The proposed project must be within the boundaries of the town of Fountain Hills. Um, it needs to demonstrate a community benefit, something that everybody or the majority can enjoy. Um, the award level is up to ten thousand dollars for one single project, or it could be split up between three individual projects. That will be determined based on the type of applications we get, the type of projects that people are proposing, and what nominees the grant committee has when we go, come times for voting. Um, the project must be completed within one year of award. We want to keep this timely and fresh, so the community continues to see the benefit of the program, and then if there's something, there's an event on an annual basis that, that shows that benefit to the community. And then we want to distribute the funds by reimbursement. Um, this way, we want to make sure, again, that it happens, that we don't give funds away, projects stall, we want to see it happen, so, um, but we can make arrangements on the side too. One note is, on the award level up to ten thousand dollars, Republic Services is looking for partners that we have across the nation to hopefully contribute and help support this program, so that can make the overall benefit, um, greater in the future, so we're exploring those ideas right now. So what it comes down to is that your vote counts. Um, each resident that participates in the rewards program has a vote, and I'm going to quickly go over how to sign up, and so they will understand how to sign up, how to earn rewards, and how to, um, uh, then make their vote. One thing I do want to note too, is that voting will start approximately January fifteenth, voting will close June first, and then we'll have an evaluation period and, uh, be presenting the award, the grant. So you can easily access the My Republic Rewards site by going to the Town of Fountain Hills, uh, homepage, you'll see a banner on the top, um, uh, middle right, you can just click on that, and it'll take you, look at the arrow, and it'll take you to the My Republic Rewards, um, page. From here, you can click now to register, all you need is simply an email address, you'll create a password, and then you're ready to sign in, confirm your address, and then you're ready to sign in. That's where you log in there, or you can even sign in with Facebook. Once you're signed, signed in, you click on the community grant on the top right-hand banner of the page, and it'll take you to the community grant page. This is what the page currently looks like, so right now it's just informative. Once we do have our, um, grant applications and our three potential grants, that will be on this page, you'll be able to see it, get a brief description of them, and be able to pass your vote there. So getting close to wrapping this up, so the important date for everybody to remember are right now, is that October first, we're going to start, uh, the committee members will start a public awareness campaign. Um, we've had some nonprofits reach out, want to learn more about it, we're going to use this presentation you're seeing tonight to go to those nonprofits and tell them a little bit more about the program and how to, um, complete their grant. On November fifth, we're going to have an open house, kind of like a pre-bid, where those nonprofits who have questions will be able to ask the committee, committee, and we'll answer those questions so they can prepare the best grant application that they can. December first, the grant applications will be due, January, uh, we're going to review them, um, on January first, the top three application finalists will be chosen by the grant committee. On the fifteenth, they'll be up on the website, and voting can begin. June first, voting ends, and then June fifth, we plan to announce the winner. With that said, does anybody have any questions? I thank you very much for the time tonight, and look forward to seeing you.
This is great, and this is such an exciting program, um, thanks to Republic Services for coming up with this, and thank you for your hard work. We have a great committee of residents, I know they've been working tirelessly, quickly to get this together, and Raymond's been directing them, keeping them on course, so I, I really appreciate the committee and all the time that you've all put into this to make this happen. This is going to be really great for Fountain Hills, I love the fact that all the residents here are going to participate and choose a project, and that the project that is chosen will be something that will benefit all the residents here. So this, this is something great, um, that you're giving back to our community, and I do appreciate it. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Chris, anything about the program you'd like to ask? If not, oh, Councilwoman Giffey.
Um, yes, it's publicly, uh, put Chris on the spot and us on the spot to say in a future agenda, maybe we could talk about, um, uh, applying ourselves for, there's several awards, uh, MAG Awards and Valley Cor- Arizona Forward, Arizona Forward Awards, um, I don't know if all of you have been receiving emails, but we've been getting, uh, kind of a rash of emails of people asking us to, uh, enter an earth power challenge, and I think sometimes you can do that in retroactively with some of the things that we've already done, and we have done quite a few things in this town over the last several years. So at, in the future, I would like to try to do that, I know that Raymond and that Chris has agreed to help us to come up with some of the numbers, to come up with a nice application for some of these awards, and then maybe next September, we'll be going to the Arizona Forward Dinner and seeing ourselves up there.
Very good. Thank you, thank you very much, have a great night.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
Mayor, we have two, Gina Galacini followed by Linda Fordle.
All right, haven't had residents speaking in a long time, thanks for having.
Thank you for having me. Um, well, I brought a quick thing on, kind of on the study that was given by, um, Valley Metro this evening, and so, I don't know, I'm not, might not be a hundred percent correct, but these are my views that I just, uh, opinion here.
Okay.
Um, my, my name is Gina Galacini, I reside in Fountain Hills. I understand that town representatives are addressing the results of Valley Metro's survey and transit feasibility study tonight. Surveys are usually designed for favorable outcomes. I've studied Valley Metro's, uh, for Fountain Hills. Now the town is faced with transit mode alternatives and a possible action plan. Last spring, um, I kind of spoke to you and, uh, wrote letters to the editor about, um, urging the town not to spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars towards the in-city trails, because a lot of the biking and walking trails, um, have a possibility of mass transit systems getting implemented alongside of them. And also, um, let's see, let me get back on track here, uh, is it possible that the town of Valley Metro has identified transit system connection opportunities under the guise of biking and walking trails in our town? That means the citizens are paying for the possible connection opportunities for Valley Metro's, uh, tr- uh, mass transit systems that are possibly proposed? Sorry, not used to speaking. Um, if indeed, how much more will the people be kind of deceived into paying for future alternative transportation, because these trails are very well, should be served as the transit system? Uh, a former Fountain Hills mayor assinuated that I invested too much fluoride when I was bringing this all up last spring, I don't know if you remember that, can fluoride wax hundred thousand dollar vans, or bronze statues, for that matter? In Valley Metro's survey, eighty-one percent of the population are forty-one years or older. Did they state how many of these people are senior citizens? Did they state how many of these people are senior citizens on a fixed budget? My concern is, or who will pay for the transit services? This makes a big difference. Alternative three considers transportation to and from Mesa at an annual cost up to two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. How many residents here travel to Mesa every day or at all? Wouldn't this be better stated as from Mesa, serving Mesa's needs? Valley Metro's study suggests service options are tailored to senior mobility needs, yet it appears to include options to serve lower minorities. As you review this study, please pay attention to the "or" of Valley Metro's concepts. For example, one concept is fifteen passenger van or an airport shuttle van. Also, the study stated Scott Stone Genus may be unwilling to contribute funds to cover costs of service in their jurisdiction, why should the town? I'm, you know, these are just my thoughts. Oh, real quick here, um, one more thing is I didn't read in Valley Metro's study under additional cost drivers, considerations of repair and maintenance, um, for, uh, the fleets or whatever you guys decide on. Um, ten percent base riders in Fountain Hills, that's not many. Um, then, one other thing that, um, when she was talking about the coupons replaced with, uh, electronics, uh, the Ride Choice fare card. Um, when, um, Councilman Tate Elsie, uh, asked if LTAF two money is all Fountain Hills has, what's the best transport we can get? Uh, one was the coupons for cabs, I thought she said the coupons were going away. And two is the Ride, uh, Choice Fare Card. Isn't there sort of qualifications for this? Um, how- and how many residents would be disallowed under those only two choices? Like the, um, the Ride Choice Fare Card? I think you have to qual- you have to qualify, you got to go fill out an application and qualify for those. But anyway, um, thank you so much for considering what I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Gina. Yes, Linda Bordeaux.
Linda.
Good afternoon, or good evening, council members, and Mayor Cavno.
Hi, I'm Linda Bordeaux, and I live on Silverado Drive.
I have a couple questions for the Valley Metro folks. Um, one thing I was, uh, is more of a comment. Um, I was surprised there were only four hundred people surveyed, and out of that, eighty-one percent are from Fountain Hills, and out of that, we don't know how many are here full-time or part-time. So in terms of installing something as expensive as a light rail, we may be out of balance with that. So that might be something we might not want to look at at this point, but, um, uh, la, 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 la. Oh, I have a question with that, I was looking at the map, and it showed pretty much our main arteries that the bus would go to, and it would then perhaps head down to Mesa to head a transit hub or to the Mayo Clinic, which is important for a lot of our citizens. But as I looked at this map, I thought to myself, how are they going to get to the bus? Are they going to drive through the Target parking lot and press fare? And then go on the bus, or are they going to park somewhere in Palisades? I mean, how, if anybody thought that through, that could be a- a problem. Um, let's see. It estimated the cost at eighty to ninety K to do the extended route from Mayo to Target, or if we got a senior van, if they wanted us to get a van instead. And my questions were, does it have to be a Valley Metro van? They noticed during the funding, we can qualify, as Councilmember Elsie stated, that LTAF two funding is not guaranteed. So if we get that, any of the services to them, and- and we decide, sorry, emerging questions here, and we decide that we want to stop it, like you suggested, we put a cap in. What happens to the folks who are used to the transportation that suddenly may have to look for an alternative method come October, September, or whenever we hit that town? That was another concern I had. But if we buy a van for the senior center, um, they also estimated a bunch of additional costs and labor and- and so forth. I needed to know, do we need to purchase that from Valley Metro? Can we purchase a van from a dealership? It could be less, it could be more, I don't know what the contracting looks like for a van. But unlike, um, most cities, while it's probably an accurate statement to say for most municipalities that volunteers them is half hazard at best, we have great volunteers in Fountain Hills. So we might not even need to dep- employ Metro Valley Metro to drive this bus. We may have enough qualified folks here already that want to do that volunteering. And that would cut down on the labor and all of that. Yes, we'd have to pay for gas and insurance, but it might be nice. We can do coordinated rides, we can, even in certain circumstances, maybe pick people up from their homes instead of just being limited to that one little loop and how would a senior set up? So, these are questions that I hope, um, they will answer in the next study, uh, because it is important that we give our folks the transportation that we need. We are an aging population, and so I'd like to see them have some sort of, you know, security. So one other question I had was the ride share, they were estimating between fifty or fifty people can qualify after they submit their application. Um, what happens if they have seventy-five people qualify, they just, or seventy-five people apply? Do they just leave out at that point? So, there also could be a gap there that buying our own van and operating ourselves might make the one. Anyway, my two cents, I went over, I'm sorry. It's nice to see you.
Okay, well, we'll take into consideration all of your comments. Some of those are good questions that we could pass on to Valley Metro to get some answers, um, as part of their follow-up survey. Um, okay, anyone else? All right, then we'll go on to our consent agenda items, we have five items. Consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes on September fifth, two thousand thirteen. Consideration of approving the permanent extension of premise liquor license application submitted by AMVAS post seven. Consideration of approving Resolution two zero thirteen dash forty-six, abandoning whatever right title or interest the town has in certain public utility and drainage systems located at one six eight one nine North Stone Ridge Court. Consideration for approving Resolution two zero thirteen dash forty-seven, abandoning whatever right title or interest the town has in the certain public utility and drainage systems located at one five nine one seven East Bridwood Avenue. Consideration of approving Resolution two zero one three dash forty, demanding and adopting the town of Fountain Hills' likely timeframe from compliance policy process summary. You have a motion to accept the consent agenda as listed, please.
Mayor, please move.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Yeh?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Councilmember Jay?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diddy? I'm sorry. Councilmember Diddy? Vice Mayor Elsie?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Cavno?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
All right, thank you. We're going to the regular agenda items. The first is consideration of appointing three planning zoning commissioners for two-year terms beginning on July first, two thousand thirteen, until September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Uh, we had, um, more applicants than we had positions. Um, I moved to appoint, um, Michael Tambo, Roy Stew, and Stephen Harris to the planning zoning commissioner to serve a two-year term beginning on July first, two thousand thirteen, until September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Uh, all three of these, uh, three volunteers are incumbents. Uh, Roy Stew had, was appointed actually originally in two thousand seven. He completed three terms. He was vice chairman in two thousand nine, and chairman again in, since two thousand ten, he's currently the chairman. Uh, Michael Tambo was appointed in two thousand eleven, he completed one term as commissioner. Uh, Stephen Harris was appointed in, uh, two thousand twelve to con- to, uh, complete a term, uh, from a commissioner who vacated early. Uh, all of these are incumbents, they've all served very well. I thank them all for their service in the past, and I thank them all for reapplying again. Uh, during the council discussion on these nominations? And, uh, can I get a motion to accept these three volunteers for a second?
I'll second your motion, Mayor.
Oh, that's right. That's the first time I've stood there, I'm not used to doing that. Any further thoughts on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. And, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Yes, thank you.
And I think, uh, Stephen's here? Thank you very much for applying your gun and for your service so far to the town on the commission. Thank you. And I think anyone else is- is here? No, okay. Uh, presentation of the downtown sidewalk plan as per the two thousand ten general plan. Ken and Paul?
Mayor Cavno, I'm a member of the council, again, the Development Services Director has a report. From the discussion that we had during the budget session regarding the consideration to, we have scout sidewalks down downtown, uh, basically unfinished. And, um, there was some discussion from the council, and we thought we'd bring this back for further discussion, uh, at this time. So I asked Paul to give a presentation regarding this matter.
All right, uh, good evening, Mayor and council. As the town manager said, during the, uh, the fiscal year thirteen fourteen budget process, council asked that the, uh, capital projects for downtown sidewalks be reinstated, and the budget was set at forty thousand dollars to be paid from the, uh, the downtown fund. Um, this is a outline of what's actually in the two thousand ten voter-approved general plan. It's a blow-up of the downtown area sidewalk plan. Um, this shows the- the gaps in the sidewalks. The ones in black have either been filled previously by the town or by developers. Um, the- the items in red are gaps in sidewalks, and the items in blue are identified in the general plan as priority locations. So what we did is, is there's five priority locations, so we're looking at using the forty thousand dollars to fill those, uh, five locations. Uh, we have the La Montana and Parkview site, uh, Palisades Boulevard and Verdi River, Verdi River and, uh, Parkview, and then two on Parkview as you approach Suaro Boulevard. Um, we would just add, this is the La Montana location. Um, this basically dead ends right now on the photo on the right, and there's- there's a little bit of a slope. So what we would do is we would design a sidewalk, and there's about just under nine hundred square feet of new sidewalk that we would want to do on the ADA ramp at the curb, and there's some, some, uh, there's a sign that we would need to relocate, and then that, and then redo some handrails and possibly some flight retaining walls. We would have to slope that sidewalk down to meet all the ADA requirements. Um, the second location on Palisades, again, uh, just over thirteen hundred square feet of new, uh, sidewalk. We would do, uh, ADA ramp at the curb. Uh, we would take, we'd have to take out some of the desert shrubs, called it landscaping, but it's really shrubs. And then we would have to do some grading, um, by the property. And all this work would be done within the town right away. Uh, then at Verdi River location, low over twelve hundred square feet of sidewalk, again, ADA ramp, um, some slight grading, and then as you look on the photo on the right, there's two water meter valve boxes there that we may need to relocate. Um, the first, the Parkview location on the north side of, uh, Parkview, um, this is probably one that'll be a little bit mu- not challenging, but require the most work, is we'd have to relocate, um, the back slope preventer and the, uh, water meter vault. Uh, we would look at, that tree would get wiped out. Uh, we'd have to, we'd have to put in an ADA ramp, and then we could possibly need to relocate that fire hydrant. And then on the north side, there's low, four hundred fifty square feet of sidewalk. We would do ADA ramp at the driveway, then we would need to clean up the, move the rip wrap that's there for drainage right now. Uh, those are the five locations, priority locations that were identified, um, in the, uh, general plan. Uh, if you have any questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Um, considering the, um, urban trail, is- is this covering some of that area? So are we kind of doing both at the same time by filling in these, or are we also advancing that next trail?
Um, all the trails in the downtown area are built.
Okay.
So there aren't any future ones that-
So these aren't associated with the trail?
No.
These are just extra, extra, um, okay. Is there any questions? Councilwoman Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Paul, are you planning on displacing this country to back of curb, to top of back of curb?
That would be, that would be our preference. Um, these- these sites are vacant, there's no active development going in. Uh, we want to go in and provide a sidewalk that's going to provide, you know, the mobility, kind of the biggest bane for our boss. If a developer does come in on one of these sites, they're probably going to want to remove that sidewalk and- and make it fit to whatever their site plan is.
Have you checked with any of the property owners to see if they are, have future plans for the property that we might be able to work with them a little bit on?
Yeah, haven't at this time, we were waiting to make sure which- which areas the council wanted to do.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor?
Paul, thanks for the presentation. I know that we've, uh, discussed this for a number of years, this infill plan's, uh, glass to see a stack before us. Um, in a few of the, um, uh, um, opportunities that we had out there for infill, you talked about some challenges with respect to, um, possibly having to move, relocate infrastructure. And I know you're trying to do this on the right away. Would a meandering sidewalk, um, help to- to work, um, or to mitigate some of those impediments? I know in the past, we have worked around hydrants and so forth and so on, is that a consideration?
Councilmember Jay, yes, um, obviously, we haven't, we haven't actually started the design yet because we wanted to make sure the locations first. And we would work within the limits we have in the right of way to try to avoid as much as possible. Um, a lot, unfortunately, a lot of the items, like that fire hydrant's right where you need to put a ADA ramp. You know, there's a couple valve boxes right where you're going to connect to an existing sidewalk. So, we work around it as much as possible.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? Want to comment? Okay, council members, just say, we need sidewalk.
So our- our plan is to start design on these locations, and then we will put it out for public view.
Okay. Bye, thank you, Paul.
Good job, Paul, thank you.
Consideration of approving an inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the municipal property corporation debt service fund in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirteen cents for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, to eliminate debt.
Mayor Cavno, I'm a member of the council, the deputy town manager has a report regarding the transfer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Prior to the Great Recession of two thousand and eight, the town's general fund revenues were close to seventeen million dollars annually, which included approximately eight million dollars in our local sales tax. A portion of the town's local sales tax was dedicated to paying the annual debt payment for the MPC Municipal Property Corporation bonds that were used to pay for town hall. MPC bonds were also sold in two thousand to pay for the community center, where the annual debt payment was funded through the general fund in the community center's budget, and that was around three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. As the recession continued, the town's revenues dropped to around thirteen million, with six million in local sales tax. In order to balance the budget in the general fund, several options were presented to the town council. One of which was used, was to use surplus funds in the MPC debt service fund to pay off the town hall bonds, which is what we did. That annual payment for savings was approximately three hundred thousand dollars each year, and was used to continue to maintain operations in the general fund. Another measure was to reduce the community center budget by cutting the general fund contribution to the MPC debt service by one half, from three hundred and eighty-seven thousand down to a hundred and ninety-three five. At the time, staff acknowledged that the risk would be that if the local economy did not recover back to the same levels as before, that there would be a shortfall in the MPC debt service fund beginning in two thousand and fourteen. That shortfall became a reality in twelve thirteen, resulting in a deficit in the MPC debt service fund of two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. Staff is requesting a transfer from the general fund to cover the shortfall, which would be taken from the fiscal year thirteen surplus revenues before transfers are made to the capital improvement fund. And depending on the level of economic recovery for this current year and the next fiscal year, it is likely that we will have to restore the full amount of the debt service to the community center budget back to the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for two more years, after which time the community center debt will be finished. And just one more note, when we, um, pledge the bonds for both the town hall and the community center, that all of the revenues are pledged. We locally, at the council level, dedicated a portion of the local sales tax, but those bonds are actually pledged with all of our revenues. With that, if you have any questions, if the council may have.
Okay, any questions? Questions? No questions? All right, um, any further thoughts on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then, um, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the MPC fund in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirteen cents for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen.
Thank you.
Second.
And, uh, any further, any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Okay, Ken, do you have anything else for us?
No, ma'am.
All right, can I have a motion for turn?
I'll move. Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
... of need, of agenda.